I just congratulated the level of staff's presentation. I said, "Now, if I could only get you up to that level." There's some presentation, got a best one around, one for you and...
Oh, okay.
I remind people that when we get to the point where you might want to ask questions, remember to wait for the mic before you start your questioning and we'll bring the mic to you for our new audio and visual.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they can't hear you. It's on, but they can't hear them.
Okay, matters must be dead.
You want to use this one? Here, use this one. Say it again. Use mine.
All right. Okay, the retreat is back in session. And to repeat what I said, when we get to the point of answering questions, please wait until we can bring the mic to you because of our new audio and visual, which right now the audio is not working. And Chris wants to remind everybody there's one pack of Cheetos back there if anybody wants them. So at this point in time, what I'd like to do is introduce our coastal engineers, Ken Wilson and Julian DeVease. And I don't know which order you're gonna go in, but Ken and Julian, thank you.
That's not working either. It's not sounding like it.
Test, test. All right, well, it is great to be back up here in Duck, especially with such a beautiful day today. And we were actually up here yesterday for the bid openings that we'll talk a little bit about for the project. So I just want to give a brief update on where we are with the project. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Julian. He's on the analysis for the monitoring that we've just concluded for the entire shoreline of the town. He's gonna go over some of the trends that we're looking at and some recommendations to move forward with that continuing monitoring program. But just to talk a little bit about yesterday's events, we got some good news yesterday. We had the bid opening. We did get four bids. This would be the second time we've opened bids for anybody in the audience that wasn't aware of that. Opened bids a couple of weeks back. And, you know, because of some of the lack of availability of dredge plants, it didn't look like anybody was really positioned to try to build the project in 2016. So we changed the advertisement, gave the dredgers all of the summer of 2017 to build the project. And we did get four bids. That's one more than we got last time. So there was some additional interest because we've opened it up. And the bid, the low bid, which was Great Lakes Dredge and Duck, they're the same company that did the Nags Head project, they came in with a bid of $38,596,850. So that's considerably less than the estimate, than the original estimate for the project. Somewhere between four and five million dollars of savings from what the estimate was on that project. So needless to say, all three towns are pretty pleased. We just kind of made that official right before lunchtime. We had to go through the bid package, make sure everything was in order. But we've evaluated the bid package and feel confident that the county can go ahead and issue the notice to award, which will be contingent on that LGC process. So where to go from here? I've spoken to the folks from the Carter Group, the financial group. They tell me that they'll probably be setting up a meeting in the next couple of weeks to go over, to have a kickoff meeting with the LGC to present the bids to them and all the updated information. Sometime in the middle of April, there'll be an actual meeting up in Raleigh where they'll go through all of the paperwork. We'll have to show them that permits are in hand, everything's ready to go. And then at that point in time, the LGC staff uses that information they obtain in questions that they might ask the towns and the county. They'll take that information and make a recommendation to the actual commission. The commission will meet in early May, and we assume that they'll go ahead and approve the project in May. And at that point in time, the county could sign the contract with the dredger. So the schedule we have from Great Lakes Dredge and Duck, they want to start the project April 1st, 2017. They will start, or their schedule at this point in time states that they will start in the town of Duck. So they're gonna try to complete your project between April 1st and June 1st. Then they'll move down to Kill Devil, or Kitty Hawk. Looks like sometime between June 1st and August 20th, I believe. And then from the end of August to the middle to end of October, they'll finish up in Kill Devil Hills and hopefully be out of here before the bad weather starts hitting in the fall. So that's kind of what we know now going forward about the dredge project. Great Lakes, you know, obviously their bid came way down from their previous dredge, or from their previous bid. But, you know, what they basically told us is they've got the exact piece of equipment that they would want to use for this job. If they were gonna be forced to build it over the winter in 2016, they were using a couple of different pieces of equipment that weren't their ideal piece of equipment because what they wanted to use just wasn't available. So they feel pretty good about things. Obviously, they've got, you know, a really great reputation. They did a great job with the Nags Head project. Our firms worked with them numerous times. And they're a big firm. They've got, you know, they've stressed to us, they've got other assets. The schedule that they provided, they feel pretty good that that's a conservative estimate. And if, you know, if they've got another dredge that's not working, you know, the sooner they can get a project finished, the better it is for them. So, you know, there's even the opportunity of bettering that schedule. But they feel pretty comfortable that that's a good schedule to work with at this point. So that's all I've got as far as the project moving forward. Be happy to take any questions or however you guys want to do it.
Ken, did they bid, did they bring all the sand from Kill Devil Hills? Or are they gonna use any sand off of Duck?
They did not include in their bid package the idea, or the concept, that they would use all of the sand from right off of Duck. So I'm assuming they're going to use some of that sand off of Duck, but they're not gonna build it all with that finer grain material that's right offshore. I think they are gonna bring some of it from the larger borrow area off of Kill Devil Hills.
Oh, excuse me, Ken, but I thought that you could do more. That wasn't possible to use just the fine sand.
What we had decided, I don't know, back when we were finalizing the bid documents, is that if somebody, some of the dredge companies that we were talking to when we were putting together the bid package suggested that if we were gonna do it in 2016, there wasn't sufficient hopper dredges to do it, and that we should take another look at the possibility of building this project with a cutter head dredge. And to pump it all the way, pump the sand with a cutter head dredge that goes through an actual pipeline all the way from the offshore borrow area off Kill Devil Hills would have been, you know, virtually impossible. So we said, "Well, you know, we do believe that that sand off of Duck is a little bit finer." And we ran some calculations and said, "If you were going to use a cutter head dredge and only use the sand right off of Duck, you'd actually have to put 20% more volume on the beach at Duck to make up for that difference in the grain size." So we gave them that option, that if they wanted to, they could do that. But they would have to compete with somebody else that was going to use a hopper dredge and bring it from that other borrow area. So none of the four bidders ended up proposing to use that additional 20%. I think the bids that we opened two weeks ago or a month ago, somebody decided they were gonna try to do it that way. But obviously, all those bids were significantly higher than the one we got yesterday.
Were the other bids competitive also?
I'm sorry?
Were the other bids competitive also?
They were all less than the, I think Weeks' bid was less than the one that they had built. It was maybe three or four million dollars less than their previous bid. But Great Lakes was the low bidder by six or seven million dollars, considerable amount.
That's great news. Great news.
Mr. DeVease?
I can go ahead and read the bids real quick if you want.
Sure.
So again, the low bid was Great Lakes, and they were at $38,520,850, no sense. Weeks Marine was $45,071,250, and no sense. Dutra Group was $48,205,55, no sense. And Manson Construction was $47,841,900. What's really significant, just looking at it, is the per cubic yard cost was, I think in the last bids for Duck, was in the, I guess the low bid was in the $12 range, between $12 and $13. And this is $8.60 per cubic yard, so.
Wow.
We were theorizing a little bit that their mobilization cost is pretty high. But, you know, for these projects, once they show up on site and they've pumped a minimum of 10,000 cubic yards in a day, they're eligible for 60% of that mobilization cost. So usually, to compare apples to apples, you gotta look at the whole cost and then divide it by the complete cubic yards, because people shuffle the deck a little bit differently to try to, you know, get that mobilization cost up front, and then they have lower cubic yards. But, yeah, I mean, it works out well because if you adjust fill anywhere along the way, you know, you're getting that lower rate. So it is good. Any more construction questions? All right. Well, yeah, I'm Julian DeVease. Like Ken said, just gonna be giving an update on the monitoring report. The previous survey that the permits were designed off of was the September 2013 survey. Last year, May 2015, we went ahead and did another beach profile survey. So we'll just be looking at some shoreline change differences over that time, go on to volume changes. Then we have an updated S-Beach analysis, identify some potential impacts with that new survey, and then just some summary and recommendations. Just our overview slide, Town of Duck, in that top left-hand corner, the survey profiles that we've taken, they're spaced about 1,000 feet apart. Starting, there are two in Pine Island, so just in Currituck County. Then we have 34 profiles across the Town of Duck. And then we have two within southern shores. And that's just a quick look at where the profiles are. But just to give you an idea, evenly spaced throughout the town. And then we have those two profiles, south and north. So a total of 38 profiles. A summary of kind of what we'll be going over, but shoreline changes. We have LiDAR surveys all the way back to October 1996 that we used. We also have a LiDAR survey at November 2011, November 2012. And then we have those two profile surveys, September 2013 and May 2015. And for LiDAR surveys, those don't penetrate the water. So for volume, or analyzing volumes and everything, LiDAR surveys don't allow you to do that. But since we do have that LiDAR data all the way from 1996, it is good to look at shoreline changes since then. And obviously, volume changes give you a better picture of the profile. You're looking at more than just a single contour. You're looking at all the way to the depth of closure, down to negative 24 here. So overall, obviously, you know, you get a better idea with volume changes. But with that longer-term data, it is good too to look at those shoreline changes as well. So just kind of looking at what we do have, starting with 1996, running to November 2011, the project area, starting at Skimmer Way to the north, and D-19 ends at the FRF Research Facility. And during that 15-year span, and these volume change rates are in feet per year. So we're looking at two feet per year within the project area and outside of that, or total cumulative, including those two in Pine Island and southern shores, a little lower, at about half a foot a year change. Then we go to November 2012. Those rates do increase. We had those two storms during that time, Sandy obviously being a big one. And those rates do jump up. And then when we look at the 2013 conditions overall, those profiles came back a little, some of that sediment in the nearshore area, and those erosion rates again were a little lower. And then we have the 2015 survey. And from 2013 to 2015, the erosion rates picked back up a little bit. So looking at the volume changes, again, the volume changes, we had those LiDAR surveys. And with those LiDAR surveys, the 2011 survey also had bathometric offshore data that the Army Corps took. One of the issues, and I'll touch on it on the next slide, but that 2011 data was LiDAR data combined with offshore data. And so typically, when you have profile surveys, they're able to get out into waiting depth. And so you have an overlap between the LiDAR surveys, or sorry, the topographic upland surveys and your bathometric data. And so looking at that November 2011 survey, trying to come up with those volumes, and I'll just go on to the next slide to show you. But looking at the bottom, that dotted blue line would represent the 2011 survey. And you can see those bars and troughs have kind of been flattened out. And basically, what happened there is we had LiDAR data upland, and then you have offshore data. But because it's LiDAR data, you don't have that overlap. So you're not catching all those nearshore changes. So when we analyzed that data and really got into the numbers, we were hoping to be able to come up with some volume comparisons there. But looking at how those profiles look, you know, once we really got into the numbers, it really became obvious that that survey data shouldn't be looked at for volume changes. And instead, just for shoreline changes, and in the future, hopefully we'll have additional surveys to really get into longer-term volume trends. So just going back here, September 2013 to 2015, these values are in cubic yards per foot, per year. So basically, we're looking at each profile, the erosion rate per foot at each profile per year. So within the project area, just under four cubic yards per foot per year. And then the entire monitoring area, just over six cubic yards per foot per year. And essentially, what you're doing to come up with a volume over those thousand-foot profiles is you're taking the density and you're multiplying it by those thousand feet evenly spaced. And that gives you cubic yards per year. And then times the two-year span, you're looking at volume loss, just over 13,000 cubic yards within that project area from Skimmer Way to the FRF, and overall, about 400,000 cubic yards. Again, these are the same profiles we just looked at. Also wanted to point out, like I mentioned before, the shoreline changes, they do give you an idea of how the longer-term trends with that additional data. But just to point out, and this isn't typical, but just to point out that, you know, some profiles, just looking at the shoreline changes, might not necessarily represent really what's going on out there. So where those dotted black lines, yeah, so right here, right here is mean-high water. And that's where the shoreline changes are analyzed, at 1.2 feet NAVD. But just in this particular instance, looking at the shoreline change here, it would be about zero feet between these two surveys, looking at 2011 to 2015. If, for whatever reason, the profile, you know, would have been a little shifted, or, you know, a little more accumulation of sand here, or let's say it would have been, you know, this profile shifted down a little, and now we're looking somewhere, you know, right here, it could, this same profile could have been, you know, 40, 50 feet per year. And so just, you know, small fluctuations like that could have an effect on the shoreline change at the time you're looking at it, at the specific elevation. So just something to keep in mind, you know, we're looking at overall trends with shoreline changes, but specifically looking at, you know, profile by profile, just understanding that there are shoreline fluctuations that do occur. And again, that's why a volume comparison over the entire profile is a little more And just to point out too, this black line here, when you do have LiDAR data, that's basically the extent that you receive data. So like I said, the LiDAR data does not penetrate the water. And so those 1996 and 2012 surveys, you're just getting this upland portion. So it is good to see if there's any dune erosion and mean-high water changes. But again, in terms of volume calculations, the data is just not there, so. Just kind of summarizing what I'd said, 34 profiles within the Town of Duck, about 1,000 feet, two north and south. And those two profiles, if there were to be projects, you know, at the limits of the town, we'd have some additional data of what's going on outside of the town, just to be able to monitor that and see how that might be affecting the town as well. So total of 38 profiles. There is a survey report that was submitted in July of 2015 with some additional information, if anyone would like to read that. But this 2015 data, we did use that for the construction plans to update that. The difference in volume was a little over 100,000 cubic yards that were needed for the project area previously in permitting. It was based on that September 2013, so when we updated the design, giving the same design, but on the updated condition, a little more volume was needed. And basically, using these updated surveys and using the S-Beach analysis that we've run it through, we're looking to just provide a basis to analyze the vulnerability of existing development and infrastructure compared to potential damages associated with those long-term trends and the impacts of coastal storms. Here we have the shoreline changes. And again, going all the way back to 1996, looking at longer-term trends, we can see that we're pretty consistent since 1996. And we've broken it down between those four surveys of November 2011, 2012, and then the 2013 and 2015 surveys. But what we see here is, you know, the largest shoreline erosion is right in the project area, and including, this right here is the FRF. So that area in general, over time, has shown the largest shoreline retreats. And when we get into the volume calculations and some of the S-Beach analysis, we'll see that these, this area up here to the north and this area here to the south have also exhibited some shoreline recession and some volume loss as well. The volume changes, I know there's a lot of numbers up here, but just kind of wanted to point out, we have seen a lot of fluctuations between profiles. And there's been some fairly or very large fluctuations. And something just kind of wanted to point out, you know, D-30, for example, we're looking at 80 cubic yards per foot per year, which is a lot. And that's not over the long term, you don't expect to see the things like that. So keeping in mind that we only have two surveys and that some of these things might not be short-term trends, but more fluctuations that we're seeing at the time of these surveys. And so we've tried to kind of take more of a total average and see how segments are reacting as opposed to looking at individual profiles. So for example, we've seen a lot, or there were a lot, or there were some additional impacts between D-25 and D-34. So instead of looking at those individually, on average, they're receding about 10 feet, 10 cubic yards per feet per year, which still, you know, is a lot and certainly something to monitor. But again, you know, just looking at those volumes in that area, you can see that there's some pretty wide swings of, you know, negative 55 cubic yards a foot per year, then jumping to 80. So just some trends to monitor and just realize that, you know, some of these large fluctuations might not be, might be occurring over kind of seasonal fluctuations and all of that. So just want to keep these numbers as a whole. So D-30, because it was so large, just wanted to point it out. I mean, that's what the survey data looks like. You can see an accumulation of the berm that you don't typically see outside of areas like this. So the entire profile on the bottom has accumulated. And, yeah, I mean, you can see just that accumulation on the top of that berm. That berm right here is just really large. And just went ahead and took some pictures from yesterday and just showing that bump out there. So it is there, but just something that, you know, we don't typically see, so just continue to monitor it. And again, realize, you know, not just looking at these individual profiles, but looking at the segments as a whole, how important that is. So this is looking north from D-30.
Hey, Julian.
Yes, sir.
It's probably, I know the answer to this, I think, but it's likely too simple to say that if you looked at D-29 with negative 55 and then right next to it, plus 80, is that a north-south movement of sand? Is the 55 loss going to the next profile area?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely some accumulation at D-29, and that would come from profiles nearby. In terms of which way that sediment is moving, kind of, that's not really enough data to say specifically. But there's no doubt, I mean, when you get an accumulation like that, it's gonna come from somewhere else, and the nearby profiles are the most likely scenario. So, yeah, that's not a stretch to say by any means. And that's where we're looking at overall trends. I mean, that sand is in the system. It might be at D-30 right now, you know, in a couple more months, you know, maybe some of it has migrated back to those profiles that were eroding more and it's leveling itself out. But just something that we had kind of seen, that there was some fluctuation between these profiles. And one, just kind of wanted to see it on the ground level, and also just continue to monitor it and see how it is moving.
Can you explain this picture for me? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure, sure. So this is, and, what's that? Yeah, I was trying to remember that. I don't know off the top of my head. Okay. And, yeah, D-30 is just north of Scarborough Lane. But this right here is that profile, and you can just see, this is at plus eight. So pretty high elevation. And you have this accumulation of sand. So really, the mean-high water location or the water level has bumped from about 75 feet out. And so that's when, looking at these photos, you can kind of see how this profile, and obviously, you know, it's just a picture and it's hard to straight-line anything like this, but just to give you a kind of estimate, how much more sand there is here.
Okay, I thought that's what you were, I just want to make sure I was following.
Sure, sure, yeah, thanks.
It's a bump.
Yeah. It's obvious.
And again, that was to the north, and then just looking to the south, not as definitive, but, yeah, that's how it looks now. And again, that was in 2015, so we're still seeing that accumulation of sand up there. And, yeah, and the combination of a lot of accumulation here and then some erosion nearby too. So again, you know, long-term monitoring, probably even itself out, but just some things that we had seen. And just looking at the volume changes, just another format. So D-30 here is what we had just talked about, Scarborough Lane. And I mentioned when we were looking at the shoreline changes, that we had seen some erosion here and also some erosion here. And that shows up pretty well here when looking at the September 2013 to May 2015 volumes. And again, just looking at, you know, the quantities, fairly large densities for, or densities per year, you don't typically see densities this high over such a short time span. So there's, you know, there's swings both ways. And just continuing to monitor here to the south, or sorry, to the north, we didn't have, once we get into the S-Beach analysis, there weren't as many impacted structures, even though there is a fairly high volume loss. The structures there are set back fairly well. And so we didn't have an overall additional, any overall additionally potentially impacted structures. But when we get up here, D-25, and there'll be street names once we get to the figures. But up here, we did have additional, 27 additional potentially impacted structures with the new May 2015 survey data. S-Beach just simulates beach profile changes.
Julian, before we move on.
Sure.
Just going back to this. So it's clear to me looking at that, and I assume it's clear for everyone looking at that, but of course, anything that's below the black line is accumulating.
Is erosion.
Is erosion.
Yeah, yeah.
And anything above it is accretion. So everything north of the project area, i.e. sandering to the county line, is experiencing negative volume. So they're experiencing erosion.
Everything north, correct, except the one small profile of D-2, but correct. They are. They are experiencing erosion. And something, just the project area from right here where it's highlighted, overall, this was a negative volume change. So, large volume loss here, and here we have more of a stable, slightly accreting shoreline. But overall, the project area did have an erosional trend there and a few additional impacted structures. But again, that southern end had more than the project area, but that's because that project area already had several impacted structures, and that's why the project was designed there. Yes, sir?
Julian, I think, though, it's fair to say, this is only a two-year period. This doesn't represent what the long-term problem has been.
Absolutely. And that's kind of what I was trying to illustrate.
We shouldn't lose sight of that, because that's why we're in the pickle. We are in the project area, is because over a twenty-five-year period, we've lost, I don't know, a hundred and fifty feet of dune, which is not, does not show on this particular chart.
Exactly. And with the shoreline change rates, that's kind of what we're illustrating, at how far back and how high those rates are there specifically. And again, because we only have those two good surveys, it's important to realize that these aren't long-term trends, that the shoreline changes, albeit not the best method to keep track of how profiles are changing, we do have a lot more data, and that data is showing exactly what you just said. Any other questions on, on this slide?
And just to, I'll just add to that, that's why, as a strategy going forward, we think it's very important to continue to monitor every year so that we can continue to build on this data, so that we, so basically, this chart becomes more and more meaningful as we get the data.
Right. Looking at the next step, for the, the project, we had taken the 2013 conditions and used S-Beach, which simulates beach profile changes, varying storm events and water levels. And using, updating the model with the new data, the 2015 survey, we reran it with an Irene-type storm. So, that's what this is based off of, I'm sorry, Isabel. And so, looking at, at this, we've identified any structures that could potentially be impacted. And that impact is defined as a one-foot elevation change between the pre-storm condition and once your storm has hit. So, it identifies the one-foot impact. And that one-foot impact, just to stress, doesn't necessarily mean that the structure is going to fail or anything like that. It's just a one-foot change, basically, is defined as potential vulnerable of the, for any part of the structure where the profile is lowered by one foot. But basically, a one-foot change essentially means that the structure could be vulnerable, but that it not necessarily is. And that's kind of an Army Corps standard of lowering that profile by one foot. And so, we went through with that new 2015 data and tried to identify any additional structure that could potentially be vulnerable.
Again, before we, before we move on, and just to clarify for myself, so I remember where I'm at, and for everyone else, what this actually is doing is it's taking that volume change and saying that if, if we had an Isabel-level storm, which is between a fifteen- and twenty-year storm, and the impacts were felt at one time. So, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, you know, there, we would have to have kind of a perfect storm to meet this condition, to have all that impact at one time. I'm saying this because when you start showing the next pictures, I think it's safe to say people's eyes are going to get pretty big. And, but it's taking all of that data and saying, this is what would happen if everything happened right at one time. Is that correct? That's my unscientific explanation of it.
No, it's a good one. And this is.
Excuse me, but what do you mean, everything happened?
Let him explain, and then you can see if you have questions.
This was, this was the metric that we used, you know, back two years ago, when we were first starting to formulate the, the project area. You know, the, the initial feasibility study was really just looking at long-term shoreline changes, because that's the data that we had, that's the LiDAR data that Julian talked about. So, we had these long-term shoreline change rates, but we didn't really know what was going on volumetrically. We established those different segments, I think, like one through ten, we had different segments that were, that were, that were eroding and accreting at different levels. And we tried to identify where those troubled areas are. And then at that point in time, we also said it might be a good idea to take a look at the storm impacts that could at any point in time, if we ever got that Isabel storm that came back, and we looked at a couple different scales. But looking at that Isabel storm, it seemed to be a pretty good predictor of, you know, where, where those impacts would be expected. So, we use that, we use those impacts to basically map the extent of the project. And so, it seems feasible to continue that approach at monitoring other aspects of the, of the shoreline to see, you know, where those impacts occur. I mean, we've, we've used this, this model, the core, it's a model that's developed by the Corps. The Corps has used it before, there've been enough projects that have been designed with it to, to ground-truth it. It's seen as a pretty conservative estimate. And again, and again, you know, what Julian's trying to stress is that it's not indicative that if your house, you know, is shown on these maps as impacted, that, you know, if this storm came through, your house is laying in the ocean. It's an indication that you could lose so much sand in front of that house that at that point in time, your house would be vulnerable to, to future events. And so, we feel pretty good that it's a, it's a, it's a good black-and-white indicator to try to identify, you know, where, where the problems are up and down the shoreline, but it's also got enough of a conservative aspect in it that, you know, it's not, you know, it's not an immediate damage, it's a good indicator. And then obviously, looking at some of these fluctuations from, from year to year, it's important to build a long-term trend, you know, so that we're not overreacting. But, you know, we're, we're trying to look at this data and, and, you know, we've got, we've got limited data points and, you know, making sure that we're, you know, providing you all the information, we're not missing anything, you know, but we also still want to, want to keep things in perspective, which is kind of what you're leading, leading on it.
Did that get at you?
It doesn't cross my mind. You had said the perfect conditions. Isabel wasn't really a perfect condition, it was just a mess. And I was trying to relate what you meant by perfect conditions, because Isabel is pretty defined, we, we have a pretty good feel for what it did. And all you're saying is that's what you used, that's fine. I understand that.
So, looking at, and we'll look at some figures right after this, but just summarizing kind of the difference in the impacted structures. Here we have the September 2013 conditions in these columns and the 2015 conditions. So, even though we saw those high erosion rates up on the north end, we've only really had one additional impacted structure, and we had one less up here. So, overall, there weren't any additional potentially impacted structures north of the project. Within the project, the numbers overall were pretty similar. We had three additional potentially impacted structures. And then when we get down here, south of the project, 25 to 34, and this is Speckled Trout Drive, D-25 here, all the way to the town limits, we have an additional twenty-seven potentially impacted structures. So, again, even though, you know, the erosion rates were a little higher up here than we had seen, overall, because of the locations of these structures, we had twenty-seven additional impacted structures here at the south end. And then just going through, kind of visual representation of what we've been discussing, that black line, here, the solid black line, is the 2015 shoreline, shoreline conditions based on, or the 2015 conditions with that Isabel storm. And this dotted line is the original 2013 conditions that were used. So, going through, just to, to update, you can kind of see the fluctuations here. This 2013 condition peeled back, and this is now the 2015 condition. And so, between profiles, it was straight-lined, and any, any structure that is impacted by that new 2015 line was updated. So, again, we're at, we're north, the north end of the project. Here we have one structure that was impacted in 2013, that's no longer impacted because D-4 bumped out, and we're, we're around Martin Lane. And so, I'll just go through these. Moving on south, again, there weren't, there were no potentially impacted structures on the 2013 conditions. And although we did see those, those erosional rates, the impact line has moved landward. But again, because of the, the position of those homes, no potentially, no additionally potentially impacted structures here either. I mean, we see the same thing near Blue Heron Lane. And we'll go, this is just north of the project now. And then, once we get to figure number seven, you can see that we do have several impacted structures. Those, those green structures are those structures that were potentially impacted on the 2013 conditions. And then those purple ones are those that have now become potentially impacted based on the 2015 conditions. So, here, Skimmer Way, like I mentioned, this is the northern part of the project. The end of the taper ends right here. And the last full fill section of the design ends halfway between these two monuments, so right around here. So, we have a full design section here, tapering in here. And with that diffusion, of course, that sand will diffuse on both, both ends, so they will get protection, you know, past D-10 as well. So, just glancing through, again, these, these impact lines here within the project, no, no additional impacts. Buffalo Head Road, again, these impact, these structures had shown potential for impacts on the 2013 conditions, so nothing new here. Even with at D-15, near Canvas Back Drive, those, those impacts being moved seaward, still, we have the same amount of structures being potentially impacted. Here we have one additional structure. Previously, it was just the pool, and now we had the pool and the structure. And this takes us to the southern portion of the project, again, just one additional structure. And that's where those three additional structures total came in. Here, this is the FRF boundary, this is where the project ends. So, this is the southern limit of the project. This is the FRF. Skip through a few of those. Oh, I'm sorry, figure 15?
Came pretty close to core.
I'll call them out if I, if I move past now. But here, here we see, this is just south of the FRF, we can see how, how far back these structures are. Moving to figure 16, this is where we start to see those impacts. And again, those, those green impacts were those on the 2013 conditions, and now these magenta impacts are based on the 2015 conditions. So, you can see these additional impacts. And again, going back to those volume changes, this is where we saw those increased volume changes. So, again, this is the, the 2013 impact line, and now, we've now recessed, moved landward with the 2015 conditions, and we have some additional structures here. So, this, starting here at Speckled Trout, and moving to the end of the town of Duck, like I mentioned before, it was twenty-seven additional structures that could potentially show impacts. And just, so this is Speckled Trout, like I just said, figure 16. And then I just had some, some photos of yesterday, just kind of showing some of the scarping that's going on here, some loss of steps. This would be looking north from near Speckled Trout, this looking south. Again, we're seeing, and just being out there yesterday, it seemed like there were a few rebuilt steps and that there were some steps that were being lost. And there are those, the scarps of the dune, clearly indicative of some, some erosion and some high wave action occurring. But overall, when we look at the dune, how far back the structures are, although showing some impact, there is still plenty of dune there for protection. In this area around Speckled Trout, we're looking at a dune of about twenty-five feet in elevation. But again, as the profile recedes and as we have this erosion and the scarping of the dune, that width of that dune will obviously, you know, continue to erode and, and become Moving on, so we were just near Speckled Trout, moving south, there was an area that didn't have too many, did not have too many additional impacted. Here we have a few pools. Then we get to Oceanway Drive, and we see that we have several additional structures again. This, for reference, is D-29, and again, I have a few photos, slightly mild, a little less milder. This is from, actually, sorry, this is, photos looking from this profile. So, first, we're going to look south, and you can kind of see that the houses are a little farther back. We have a wide dune. And then we'll look, this is figure 18, we'll look from that, this line, looking north, sorry, I'm sorry, looking south. And you'll see that these structures are a little closer, and that's why a little more vulnerable. So, again, this looking north, not as much scarping. This looking south, a little more scarping, but really, from the top of the dune, this was looking north. And again, I mean, the structures are, are far back. We do have this pool structure here, which was impacted. But when we look to the south, you know, obviously, these houses are, are much closer to the dune system. So, as that dune erodes, those impacts are going to be farther, farther landward. Figure 18, here we have the same type of impacted structures. We were just looking, those photos were from here, looking north, I'm sorry, south, from, from here, looking south, that's what we had just looked at. And then, again, this is, now we'll be at D-29, right at Oceanway. Again, several impacted structures, but here we're looking north, pretty defined scarp area there in the dune. Same thing likewise, looking south. And then, some additional steps, very large scarp, you know, over ten feet tall. And then here, we're looking north, and again, just those, those structures being fairly close to the dune, that dune showing some erosion, and those, the structures showing some higher potential for impacts. Here we're getting to the southern boundary, one additional structure here, a few additional, figure 20, that is. And we are near Pullover Drive now. Figure 21, we have some additional structures again. And that is the southern town limit here. And so, that area there, we just went over, that's where those twenty-seven potentially additional impacted structures were. And just going over the summary of the shoreline and volume change analysis, along with the S-Beach. But the long-term shoreline change rates, and that's at the mean-high water line, remain consistent from 1996 to the present. That's that shoreline chart that we looked at. Overall, long-term trends, we're seeing that erosion within the project area, the highest. We're also seeing an erosion at north of that project and south, and those volume changes show the same type of trends, albeit over a much shorter span. The volume change analysis indicates recent erosion trends north of the project, like we talked about, and south of the FRF, similar to the, the shoreline change rates. And certainly, some additional monitoring is required to, to determine if those, those are long-term rates or just shorter-term trends that we're seeing. And the S-Beach analysis indicates additional structures may be vulnerable, using that one-foot methodology we discussed. And those structures south of the FRF property between Speckled Trout and the southern town limit were those additional twenty-seven structures. So, recommendations, can you, continue to monitor the town shoreline with an updated survey. We could update the S-Beach analysis. Again, see if those are, are longer-term trends that we're seeing with those impacted structures, with the volume analysis and an updated S-Beach. So, thank you very much. Hope that wasn't too many numbers, but... Hope that wasn't too many numbers, but any, any questions?
Yes. Given that, if the project now holds, that we start in April of 2017, does it make more sense for us to do our monitoring just before the project rather than do it during this
The question was to monitor right before the project in 2017?
Yeah. As opposed to doing it now? So that way, if the, if there's any particular changes that have occurred, you pick them up right at the, right before the project starts?
Before the project, there's going to be a pre-construction survey, and that's part of the contract. So that will be done regardless.
But it won't do the whole beach like you're doing here?
Correct. That is correct. So it would be within the town. So there could be discussions with the contractor about expanding that.
Right now. Is there any value to do it immediately, since we got to do something anyways, within about eight months, nine months?
We're planning on doing it.
I thought you said, you said, update it for 2016.
Yeah, I think, I think our, our recommendation in this presentation would be to consider doing it this spring, to consider updating the shoreline survey, just because of what he was talking about. Right now, we have those two, those two data points, the 13 and the 15 are really the best data points to compare apples to apples. And we want to get another year in there to start looking at whether or not these trends maintain, or if we're seeing some of those fluctuations. You know, we feel like it's, you know, that one more data point sort of gets you in, in the mind frame of, is this something that we expect? You know, those, those volume changes are going to decrease over time, and maybe, you know, it's not time to sound the alarm? Or are those changes continue to move forward? And, you know, at what point in time do you start looking at, at doing something in other parts of the town?
I understand that. My only question was, if we're doing a, a pre-construction survey, is that not the time to do it rather than do it during this year? I mean, we don't gain a lot, we gain more by doing it then than we do now. Because you add some time in it.
Just to clarify your recommendation, if you could, maybe go back to that recommendation slide, so we can take a look at it. Update S-Beach analysis with 2016 data. Is that what you're talking about?
Right.
You're talking about doing it right now?
Right. Last year, we did it in May. And, you know, I, frankly, from a, from a budgetary standpoint, we'd be looking at doing it after July 1st. I mean, far be it for me to keep bringing up money, but, 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 I mean, I think, you know, we've, we've sort of, we don't have much money left. I can see what we have left, and we might be able to do something. But I think we're probably looking more towards doing it later in the year. I think it's already going to be part, for the project area, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, you, you're going to do that pre-construction survey because everything's based on the volumes. And so you want to make sure your volumes are still providing the same level of protection. So that's why, I mean, that's why they'll do it right before, obviously. But in terms of the law, looking at the long-term trends, you know, we want to do, we want to do this annually to get that data in. And, and I don't know if it makes a difference to you all when we, you know, if you want it to be May every year, or if it's just in 2016, if you just have the data points, if that's really the best, what really matters.
Should be the same season.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one of the, one of the things that we were considering when recommending moving forward with 2016 is that now that we've got a year before the, you know, the, the construction contract hits, kicks into play, if we could do that analysis and take a look at it, you know, having that dredge here, we, you know, we don't, we don't think it's time to raise the, you know, ring the bell at this point in time, and that, you know, there's a, there's a crisis brewing south of the FRF. But it is something to keep an eye on. And so if we get this verification this spring, that, you know, these, these, these rates have backed off a little bit, or we've got a little longer term, we can rerun that. We could also look at what, what sort of a project, what sort of sand that you might need to put in front of that dune, you know, to mitigate any of those impacts, you know, is that something, is that information worth having, knowing you've got, you know, a year from now, the dredge coming in here, and you've got the opportunity to plan, you know, plan ahead for something?
Let me ask you a money question. What are we talking about cost-wise to do this?
$20,000? $19,000 was what we paid for, I think?
For the surveys?
Well, you're talking about survey plus analysis, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it might be closer to 60. For the, for the surveys of the whole town and, and that analysis.
That's why I propose we wait.
Six, zero?
Do the construction, put it all together.
Six, zero?
Yeah. So.
Could I just ask a question while we're thinking about this? We did this May of 2015, and then we, they did this actual survey, and then the analysis was done when?
The analysis was done, I think it started like sometime around November. You know, we, we had, we had collected the data because it was for that, the, to update the design. So all three towns got resurveyed, but there was a question between, you know, whether or not to move forward with doing the analysis of the rest of the town. You had the data, but, you know, to move forward with the analysis.
Analysis, okay.
We didn't really kick into the analysis until like Thanksgiving or something.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was, actually, that was, was the figure I was thinking of, which is what we transferred money previously.
Right.
That was the charge for the additional analysis, was that?
Right.
How long does an analysis take if you just like say, I want this, and I want the analysis too? Normally, how long would that analysis take?
Right, once, I mean, once we have the, once we have the survey data, I mean, probably within two months, you could, you could do the analysis, you could do the S-Beach analysis, you could look at updating the shoreline change and volume change. But, I mean, you're right, you were like, you know, well, you collected this a year ago, why are you just presenting it now? But it was, you know, for budgetary constraints and things like that, that was kind of put on the back burner.
I think we need to take this under consideration and just have a further discussion on that.
Ken, I do have a question. For a project that would begin in April, when would the pre-survey work be done? How far ahead?
It's got to be within 30 days?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they'll, in, in the contract, it's specified that we want that data 30 days ahead of time, so that we can adjust the design, if need be, to any changes. And then, as they go, they get paid based on, they're going to survey the beach, like, within seven days prior to actually, seven days? Seven days prior to placing that sand on the beach. And then, as soon as they've constructed a section, they survey it again, and they compute that volume, and that's how much you know you're going to pay. But they do do a full survey about a month in advance, so that if there are needs to make adjustments to the design, it can be done. So probably looking at March.
And the survey, a month before, that's on the thousand-foot profiles that we talked about today, the pay profiles are every 100 feet.
The, the, I think the point that's being skirted around is, and might as well throw it out here at the risk of throwing it out here, is that if there is concern about the erosion south of the pier, and there is a desire to do something about it, when we have a dredge here, would be the time to do it.
Could we get permits for an extended? I mean, yeah, that.
I don't know.
That was getting ready to be my question, was.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that you, the fact that you have the permits in place, the borrow area is all established, there's plenty of volume in it, to expand an area of the beach, I mean, we, we had this conversation, you know, a couple of days ago, and it, it does seem within reason that you could modify a permit that quickly to add on a section of beach. You know, if you had to come up with a new borrow area, no. You know, I mean, we just went through all this over the last two or three years, couldn't start from scratch. But to modify something that already exists is, is reasonable.
Okay.
More, that was my question. Not more importantly, but equally important for consideration would be, if we were going to do that, we'd want to get MSDs in place, we'd want to, we'd want, we'd still have the easements to get all of that stuff. So from a, from a logistics standpoint, and Ken and I talked about this when, when this data first became available Friday, this past Friday, we, it's a lot to try to, try to take on when, frankly, the council hasn't established a firm policy on when nourishment would be, would be the, the preferred alternative, and when you would pull that trigger to do an additional project. And so, those are questions that, you know, that are really being thrown at you for the first time today, that you haven't had time to deal with. And we don't have those data sets to say whether this is going to continue.
Whether it's long-term or short.
Exactly. You know, you go out, and it's striking when you drive on the beach, and we can certainly get everyone out on the beach at some point and drive the entire length if you'd like to. But, I mean, you see stairs that are uncovered because of erosion. They're old stairs, which means that at one point, those stairs were built there, which means you had a bunch of accretion. So the question is sort of, you know, again, is it going to continue, or are we still in one of those cycles? We know from previous, again, from the, from the aerial photography that we drew the lines on, which isn't the, doesn't really get it volume change, I think is the correct way to put it. But we know that from where that first line of stable natural vegetation was, that south of the pier has been remarkably stable over the years with the, with the, with the aerial photographs. But that doesn't get it, I mean, that doesn't get it the overall volume change and that sort of thing, which is really what they're, they're focusing in on. So, again, I, if I were just looking at this, and, and if I was forced to make a recommendation today, I, my recommendation would be to continue to monitor, and let's, let's see what's happening. But ultimately, that's a question you guys are going to have to grapple with as this evolves.
But you're, you're saying that it's, may not be reasonably practical for us to try to modify the current plan?
No. The, the current plan is with a great deal of money from the county, which wouldn't, you know, so, you know, if, if, I guess we're talking about that, if we do do the survey in 2016, say, hey, we have a big problem, the equipment's coming in, but the main reason we can even do what we're doing is because of the help from the county, we might not even be able to, to pull that off.
Not to mention the surveys, I mean, it took, you know, it was a, it was a huge, it's been a huge project to get where we are today with the nourishment area that we're talking about. And I, from just where I'm standing, I can't see there's any chance that we would able to mobilize that, much less have the data or the analysis or the public will or the county's involvement. And I think it kind of, to pull it back, just to make one more point about this, is that there's no guarantee that we're ever going to get any more county money for Duck. You know what I mean? We just have to remember that, right now, we're in a particular point in time where we have what we have, and we're going to do what we're going to do, but there's no guarantee that the town can continue to do any other beach areas without assistance. And that comes with a lot of other pieces. So I just think we have to be realistic, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't think we're in any position to make a change to the project we've been working on for many years. I think we ought to take under consideration what we want to do on this survey, because I kind of agree with Chuck, in fact, we're going to be doing surveys next, next year for pre-construction. The surveys are two years apart anyhow, and things are going to change, and we don't have it in the financial plan. Doesn't make any sense to move quickly to do another survey this year. That's fiscal year.
That's where I was.
Yeah, I have to, I have to agree with that. Makes sense to wait.
Do it when they're doing it.
Do it all together.
Right, that's with the analysis in a timely way.
And recognizing it's going to cost us some, some money for the analysis, but, and also some extra for some of the survey, but not the whole thing.
Yeah. And the question is, Chris, have you given any consideration toward it in next year's plan?
Yeah, we, we plan on putting money aside for, for monitoring and, and the budget. One thing I would say, there's a difference between gathering the data and, and doing the S-Beach analysis every time. I mean, the, the big key is doing, we never, we didn't really anticipate doing an S-Beach analysis, there's no reason why we can't. But there, our big thing was to try to gather that data every year, and then, on a regular basis, also do the analysis to see, see where we're at. For, for both of those, you say we're talking around 60 grand for that. So, you know, there's, there's no reason, our plan always included monitoring, it didn't always include the S-Beach, so.
Help me out on, when we talk the S-Beach analysis, so I understand. It appears to me that if you get the data, it's relatively straightforward to see whether we're adding or subtracting. Then to go on and, and look at what potential damage is going to occur and those kind of things, that adds to the analysis problem.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So, it gives us the opportunity to see how we're doing, and then make a decision, do we really want to do any more analysis that year, or do we want to wait till we get another data set?
Sure, I mean, that, that's always been the plan.
So we could approach it that, is that correct? We could approach it that way?
Yeah, I mean, typically, typically for monitoring programs, you know, especially after a project's constructed, every year, we recommend, you know, doing the beach profile surveys and doing this, you know, updating your volume change rates, looking at your short-term, what happened since last year, and then what happened in your longest, you know, frame of reference, that you're looking at long-term changes. And we would give, you know, shoreline changes and volume changes every year, this is how the project is performing, this is how other parts of the, the town are performing. And then that gives you some insight into, you know, how soon the next project's going to happen, or do you need to expand the footprint of the last project? That's typically how it's done. This, the, the S-Beach analysis that we've, that we've started looking, and, and once you've built that project, then now you've sort of committed to, okay, well, we have a design in place, and we're going to maintain that design. Like, this project is, is designed to, to put a specific amount of sand there, so that theoretically, if we run this S-Beach analysis on the designed beach, there are no impacts behind it. And so the idea at that point in time is to maintain that sacrificial sand in front of that design in perpetuity. So you're sort of established at that point in time, and it's just a matter of, have I lost all that sand yet or not, or when's it all going to be gone, and how much more do I need to put on? But for the rest of the town, you haven't really established where that, you know, pardon the pun, line in the sand is that you're going to maintain. And so that's what we're using this S-Beach for, for the rest of the town at this point in time. It's the same process we use that, you know, up, up on the north end where the project area is. And so it made sense to continue that analysis to look at, you know, potential future impacts to structures. Knowing, again, that it's a very conservative estimate, say, you know, you could have an event like Isabel come through, and those lines that are shown up on, up on those maps that Julian just went through, it's not, you know, that's not where the dry sand beach is going to be, or where the water line's going to be. It's a theoretical position on the profile, where the profile has actually dropped one foot in elevation.
Well, it would seem to me that combining the two measuring things into one makes sense. And once you've got the volume analysis, then you make a decision, do you, do you do an in-depth analysis, or do we wait two years down the road again and collect another data set?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that would be what I would suggest.
Chris, during our budget workshop.
Wouldn't spend the money this year that we're going to already spend some of next year for the project.
During our budget workshop, can you get some estimates on what the analysis would cost and what the survey would cost, and we can maybe have that discussion? Certainly, today, we're going to make a decision today, but.
And, and maybe we could talk about, you know, just a strategy, so we're all on the same page about, kind of in layman's terms, about, you know, like annually, and, you know, just what, what we've kind of been thinking about, because it is really helpful to have this level of detail of you explaining even what, what your processes are, so that we can make sure we're understanding them as well. I mean, good times.
Yeah, I think it'd be very helpful, because it would allow us to get a long-term plan, not just for monitoring where the project is, but for the whole, whole beach. And, and that way, we can plan for where it fits in the budget and those kind of things.
That's the idea.
All right. Good.
Any questions for either Ken or Julian? Karen, wait for Mike.
Questions at this point.
You see, the contract is based on a per cubic yard price, in other words? If the contractor, where like this company, you know, replaces, say, are they, they're going to do a survey to know how much they need, correct, or not?
Correct.
So, and that's included in the contract?
Correct. Just within the project area.
Just so.
Yeah.
And is that contract price based on per cubic yard, or is it, in other words?
There's several.
If it's not, maybe more cubic feet than they were linked with, they'll get the $8 and whatever.
Yes, yep, that is correct.
So we're not looking at change order?
Well.
Unforeseeable?
If you needed more, it would be a change order to add that, but the price per cubic yard would remain the same. Yeah, there's a 25% adjustment allowed. Exactly, yeah, without a change in unit price.
Exactly, yep, without a change in unit price.
Hello, my name's Henry Law. I just want to bring up one thing. You keep talking about catastrophic storms. Beach erosion is like playing golf, you know, it comes and goes and comes and goes. Really, the storms hit, but that isn't what is doing the damage, it's just the wear and tear where we're getting more eastern, it's 40, 50 mile an hour winds for four or five days.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you've looked at it, but I haven't really seen anything, you know, as far as the lines along those lines. Secondly, I hope sand fences and grass planting continue while we're waiting for it because it works.
Yeah.
For what we already have. And thirdly, I would request that since things have been delayed for a year, that you put back the street signs that would go up on the beach because they are invaluable for safety purposes. People that land here for a week, they don't know where they are, they are valuable, people walking the beach at night, so if that could happen, there would be a difference.
Henry, just to your points there, number two, well, number three first, the street signs were taken up by Ocean Rescue, so we wouldn't lose them. They'll put them back in as the season starts, so they'll be back in place. And the second thing is the town does plan to do planting, but not sand fencing only in a few areas. So, we will be doing planting, correct?
Soundsea is one of those areas where we do do fencing.
Correct.
And as for point one, that's where the longer-term trends really come into play. Those seasonal storms, that gets averaged out over the year. Looking at per storm, every storm and trying to update it, the reason we look at those larger storms, because as we're looking through time, we're trying to figure out what sort of storm would make a structure vulnerable. But, looking at the longer-term trends, those storms that you're referring to are averaged into those trends. And so, that's why we're trying to look at it over the longest term to figure out what sort of impacts those profiles are having over time, given those shorter storms, those nor'easters that do impact. So, that's how those are taken into consideration. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from council or from the audience? Chief?
I have a question. Are homeowners on the ocean going to be allowed now to do beach pushes and sand fences and planting while they wait another year for erosion, I mean, for the nourishment?
The answer is yes. You can do planting, fencing, beach pushes, whatever, up until the point in time we re-nourish.
And I wasn't clear, Chris, about where is it the town does it up? Is it all homeowner property across the beachfront? So, where would the town be doing? Sand and planting?
We don't do sand, we do planting, we do sea oats and we do beach grass every year and we have for, what, five years?
And how do you select the places that get it?
Every property on the ocean gets it.
Every property on the ocean?
That can get it.
Yeah, I mean-
If I can just clarify, beach grass is planted everywhere yearly in the fall, except for the nourishment area. Sea oats is planted throughout the entire town. Sand fence is done in the areas where we are trying to preserve beach access, specifically at Soundsea Village and at Sanderling. Any other questions?
I just want to know, with beach pushes, I know that there's a timer that it's cut off, you're not able to do that. And what is that, what is that timeframe?
Beach pushes must be completed by May 1st. You have to get a CAMA permit. You can run them through our office, they take about 10 to 12 days to process. I will let everyone know that's interested that there is some difficulty getting access to the beach because the Corps no longer allows private project access. I do understand as of today that H. Newbern, who did a fair amount of beach fill projects when we had 159 Buffalo Head available, he is doing beach pushes for some people. My understanding is that he is charging a per-mile travel fee from Kitty Hawk. So, if anyone's interested, they can certainly contact him for permits, run the permits through me.
Where he gets access is from Kitty Hawk?
That's my understanding. Now, I spoke with a private property owner today and that's who she's talking to. And then, of course, I have one other contractor who's actually working with two adjacent property owners, going between the properties, get over the dune and also to bring fill in that way. And if you're going to do beach pushes or beach fill, you are required to sand fence and/or plant as well.
The reason we're not doing sand plantings in the beach nourishment area, I was under the impression it was because it was, there was no place to really-
Yeah, we're doing sea oats in the area. We're not doing beach grass because there's no place to plant it.
Right, so sea oats are going in the nourished area?
Yes, sea oats are going the entire length of town because they are planted on the top of the dunes, so they're less likely, less susceptible to storms. But, really, the beach grass even this past few storms in a lot of areas has survived. So, I'm just going to knock on some wood.
Thank you.
After the last storm, they haven't looked out the dirt anymore. They're not like this.
They'll go up at the top of the escarpment.
Yeah, I know, because I get it at the top too.
Are there any other questions for, oh, Donna has one.
I'm fire, not sand, so, question one. In the Nags Head project, is it true or just rumor, please help, does the sand migrate south?
It migrates. Sand migrates in both directions. At any given time, you go out there, if the waves are coming from the north, it's going to migrate south. If it's coming from the south, it's going to migrate north. And when they talk about it's migrating south, they're looking at over the course of a year, what is the net effect? So, some sand moves north, some sand moves south. If you add it all up, more is moving south than north. And that's generally the trend along North Carolina, although I want to say when we did that feasibility study, we looked at a couple of different wave records and some of them suggested that in and around the project area, there could be more, a net transport to the north. I know they've done some sediment transport studies in and around Oregon inlet that suggested, you know, on certain timeframes, there was a net movement of sand to the north. So, it really depends on the weather conditions, but, I mean, either way, on either end of that project, sand is going to spread off of that project in both directions.
So, to do, if you want to do the analysis you're suggesting before the project, if that can hurt or help, because then once the project goes down, is that data, we had a presentation yesterday where they were saying, well, now we have to asterisk that, the data prior to this point because it is going to change it anyway. So, does that change it?
Yeah, I mean, I think-
So, does that point help you?
Yeah, I think-
That data set help you?
What we were looking at, what jumped out at us a little bit was the additional, you know, because of this metric that we're using to measure, you know, where vulnerable houses are and things, the idea of seeing some additional ones down south of the FRF, that was really the area that we were thinking about, you know, updating that analysis. Like Julian said, you can even see it in this graph, to the left of the screen, that little dip down below the black line is a long-term erosion trend north of the project area. But, we would expect sand is going to move up into that area, so in the couple of years after the project, you would see those rates, you would expect those rates to come down or maybe even reverse and you'd get some accretion up in that area. And since there aren't any vulnerable houses up there at this point in time, you know, that's not something that, you know, that we were, you know, raising eyebrow about. But, it was more the area that was well south of, you know, on the southern part of the town as far as updating that analysis and taking a look at that. The FRF is well aware that sand is going to spread into their area and they're preparing to, you know, pull up some of their equipment and move the equipment and things like that. So, but yeah, you would, you definitely expect to see gains of sand adjacent to the property, on both sides, adjacent to the project.
Any other questions? Sharon?
I don't know. Are you familiar at all with the Broadkill Beach project up in Delaware? My question is really about Army Corps of Engineers and some cooperation. Broadkill Beach did a fill beginning in April of last year and the title on the news online was, "The Fill Begins, Pushing Back Time and Tide." U.S. Army Corps of Engineers begins three-mile Broadkill Beach, Dune and Shoreline fill. And they have created for that area of Delaware, a 200-foot beach for three miles of Delaware. I'm just curious why it is that the Army Corps of Engineers does that entire project for $30 million and we can't get them to give us access to the beach, to the north end of the beach? I don't know if North Carolina has issues, so they can't go to the Army Corps to find out if we can get some financial assistance from them, any kind of help that they can give us. But, the fact that they did an entire beach fill project for that area of Delaware for no cost to each area, at the Broadkill Beach, I just don't understand where the Army Corps of Engineers feels in this whole project.
I mean, I can address it a little bit. There are a lot of different entities within the Corps of Engineers and they tend to all be lumped in to the same group. We deal with the regulatory folks of the Army Corps of Engineers, they don't build projects, they basically review permits and regulate, you know, the National Environmental Protection Act for these projects to make sure that they check all the boxes. There's another side of the Corps of Engineers that, their civil works portion, and they're the ones that actually build these projects. Dare County actually, you know, had an authorized project in 2001 that Kitty Hawk and Kill Double Hills were both a part of, so was Nags Head. There are a lot of issues with those federal projects, the main one is funding, trying to fund those projects. It takes a long time to get an authorized project in place. And then, what Dare County found was that even once you go through, you know, years and years of studies and getting your authorization in place, from 2002 to 2011, when Nags Head finally built their project, they never got allocation for actually constructing the project. So, that's a pretty typical message that's being sent from the Corps these days, that unless you already have a project that's established and that gets funding on a regular basis like Ocean City, Maryland, or Sand Bridge, or, you know, the Resort Beach at Virginia Beach, Wrightsville Beach down in the southern part of North Carolina, some of those projects are successful getting funding. But, any of these projects that are now being authorized and coming online really have very little chance of getting that federal funding. I think the Broadkill Beach project takes advantage of something that's called RSM or Regional Sediment Management. So, some of that sand, I believe, is coming from the navigation channel of the Delaware, the Delaware Bay there. So, I think that that's why the Corps intends to pay for a little bit more of that project. I mean, and then again, the entity that you guys are dealing with here is a very small aspect of the Corps of Engineers. They're a research arm of the Corps of Engineers that are simply doing experiments out there. They've got their own attorneys that have to, you know, that have to sign off on things and it's basically, I don't know, Chris might be able to speak to this, but it's basically, there's, you know, so much paperwork involved that it's like, you know, we're not getting anything out of, you know, this project, so, you know, is it really worth going, jumping through all these loops and putting, you know, whatever liability they think they face, you know, taking on that liability for this project? So, I mean, they have worked with us, you know, to some extent and, you know, we're getting access through there and there continues to be discussions with them, you know, about, I don't know if you guys ever got a final agreement in place, but that's what I'd say about, you know, the FRF as a separate entity.
Yeah, we continue to work with the FRF. It's with lawyers, but we've agreed to terms so we will have access to the, for the project. There's not access for individual property owners. We can't, we can't do that, that's up to them. So, but yeah, we will have that. I talked to the lawyer yesterday and we're just waiting for the final deal. It's going to cost us a significant amount of money to meet their requirements, but we weren't successful getting, in any other area, getting access, so it's going to cost probably $200,000 to $400,000 extra for the project for access. But, we got to do what we got to do. So, that's how we're doing that. And one other thing I would just say about federal funding, there is no federal funding for it, but if there were, we'd also have to meet the public access requirement, which would be a public access every half-mile and public parking within a quarter-mile of that, of every access. So, you know, so, we would be unlikely to meet that and just knowing when we had initial conversations about that with HOAs, there was very little desire to provide any public access. So, we actually have a good formula now where we can pay for it through occupancy tax and through the MSDs because we don't have that requirement unless anyone is ready to donate a property for public access, at which point then we might build it to work something out. But, so, you know, the other thing that Ken didn't mention and I don't want to speak out of turn, but many of the, many of the communities south of us who have had mature projects that were federal and they continue to work with the Army Corps for these, they were like 50-year projects. And so, they were authorized 50 years ago and they are now dealing with the fact that there's no federal money and they don't know how, they're struggling to figure out how they're going to pay for their projects. So, you know, I can't speak for up north and there's a whole different dynamic up there, but just from my colleagues, I know that they've dealt with this issue and they're, many of them are sweating about how they're going to deal with issues. I know, what was it, North Tofso who had to do an entire project, debt it out themselves and they're deadening out what is essentially a five-year project over 30 years because that's the only way they can afford it. So, you know, so the system we have here, it might not meet with ideal timelines and that sort of thing, but it's a good, solid project that's sustainable and is very doable in the near term. And so, I think it's, we should be very proud of the fact that this was able to be put together the way it was.
There's also no state funding available either. Any additional questions? Thank you very much, Ken. Thank you, Julian. Appreciate it. We're going to recess until 3:15.